I think the heating system now shakes the floor.
Call the board of supervisors in the session for our eight forty-five work session with our county engineer, Russ Weber. Russ?
Good morning. I'll breeze through this real quickly. Currently, we have the Hickory Valley Bridge Replacement. Taylor has completed most of the bridge substructure and will be working on the superstructure for the next couple of weeks. Goose Hill making progress on the HMA overlay. Between Goose River City will be balancing one to two crews between Goose Hill Road and James and Flanagan Road. So in the next couple of weeks, those those two will wrap up. Thunder, all all that needs to be done is some shoulder and some paint lines. And the Hammeran Bridge. Schrader has completed the superstructure. And gonna be out this week and JPT will come in and do some grading for the approaches. So that's currently what we have going on. Guys have any questions on any other aspects of it? Oh, and the John Deere. Continuing on that south roundabout. At Peru paving. Curb and paving lanes, medians, truck aprons. And the arterial, sounds like they're gonna finish that surfacing, HMA surfacing from Pennsylvania to US twenty. This week, hopefully wrap that up.
That's that's been causing significant delays for the first time I've been hearing complaints. But it's the nature of, you know, they have to.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I think last week they. Hesitated with the abnormal cold weather in their night paving operations that they elected to wait till this week. Better weather, so.
Progress and you can see it every day.
Right? So it sounds like their construction season on that aspect will be pretty close to wrapping up this year. And then they'll continue next year. North Bond Lanes?
The only thing I would comment, and I know that we're not intimately involved in that is. The painting of the. The curbs. We're gonna need to, it's confusing. There, when you make a turn, it's a wide turn arterial connection between. Asbury Road and the arterial people, you know, there's been so much diverted traffic. How you make those turns, it's back to the way that it was. But the painting is all scraped off the medians. So we're not gonna paint in the middle of this. I guess I'm just saying that maybe they can make that a priority when it gets time to do that. We've seen people hesitate, like, should they? Should they turn there? Do they turn there? Well, of course you turn like you always do, but it's no longer as obvious without the painted medians. The lines are there, but the paint is off the medians.
Jay?
Um, just kind of. Three things. One, I don't know if you have Peru Road on your list for the five-year plan. Anthony had talked about once we were done with the the. Built grant that we potentially look at Peru Road improving that since there's a lot of traffic on that. So just wanted to kind of give you a heads up on that piece. And then maybe just two markers for moving forward. I would like to have a work session with with you and obviously the board here on the five-year plan. Just, I think this is your first one going through.
Nope.
And so just maybe before you drop it on us on the agenda.
Okay.
Have us a work session on what your thoughts were, what last year's plan looked like, those types of things. So. Assuming my colleagues are up for that.
That'd be fine.
And I can't remember when that thing was due when we. We have to do it every year, but I can't remember. My memory is either fall or somewhere in the. Design period.
Yeah, it's coming up in the next couple of months.
So that would be the piece. And then the other one is if we. Needed or want to do a snow meeting. At one point, we had done that and had brought school district in, certainly other towns and us related to coordinated efforts on snow events. I'm not saying we have to do that, but. You know, I think earlier on in my term, it was seemed great collaboration. It was really good to see everybody in there. Certainly, the sheriff's deputies had people there as well.
Yes.
And so if Harley and find benefit in that, maybe we can do another one of those.
I think that would be a very good. Opportunity for everyone to collaborate.
Works work session on a snow meeting.
Yeah, and maybe show them our app that we have, and certainly they can be familiar with the DOT's app as well, because there's a lot of technology out there to locate. Where snow plows are and what routes have been completed.
I'm seeing the topic. What is the topic? We won't have a a snow wet meeting? Can we turn the volume up, please?
Snow removal work session. Agreement with the sheriff's office and school districts and whatever. We've had them through several years. I know the sheriff's office had them with the county.
And then Corey Fong's been here twice, talking about monastery road in public comments. So just. Saying that, I don't know if you're working on something. He's twice now come here to ask for a work session with us about that. So I just comment that on to you. I'm assuming you know that that's out there.
Talking about maybe next week having a work session.
Yeah, I can reach out to Bob and see what works for him.
See if that would work for next week.
Okay. And then, um, do you, any other comments?
I have nothing.
Um. If you don't, if you don't mind, if you want to have a quick, brief discussion on. Uh, one of the resolutions we have today with the the truck. Um, so we're putting four vehicles out for bid state letting. We have not done this, to my knowledge, in the past, or it's been. Many years. Um, normally, we go local bid and it's performed well for us. But with with supply and demand shortages, we've had troubles, especially with our last contract. We had three trucks out for bid. We worked well with our supplier. Unfortunately, um. They were met. It's just with some modifications, we ended up paying a little bit more than what we had. Planned for, you know, a little bit more of a model than what we required, but. Through through collaborative work between us and the supplier, we we got that achieved. And just staying ahead on this and trying to not fall behind. We have four trucks. That we would like to. Test the water of the state bid. Does not mean we necessarily have obligation to. Pick from these as well. And these four are just a small portion of what our fleet may need. Especially the three fifty is is a plow truck and the current one has some frame damage. That's one we would like to get handled right away. But we also, you know. We have room for a couple other, you know. Standard pickup trucks and then also five fifty strip chassis that we are planning on going local, still planning on going local, whether it takes. A long time or not, we just feel that that approach on staying local with those vehicles. And the immediate need for them. So. You guys have any questions or comments, or can I expand on anything for you?
No, yeah, at the sheriff's office, they've used the state bid a lot of times for vehicles and we give the local dealers the opportunity to bid on them. And if they're reasonably close, yes, we go with the local, but depending on the difference, sometimes you have to go to state bid because. You're still trying to preserve tax funds, so.
Right. And and I think we have a pretty good history with our locals. And like I said, I don't think this is something that we want to do every year, just to kind of, like I said, stay ahead of the our more immediate needs. Going forward, these these few few out of the. Many vehicles we need to keep our fleet up to speed. Going going for the state bid for the first time here.
The these are all budgeted.
Yes, yep.
Russell, I spoke last week. Whoa, that's a good one. Related to this. So. Are they currently unavailable in inventories when you contact our local dealers? I mean, are they saying, hey, I just don't have these trucks? Is that is that the reason we're going out for the state bid?
I believe, yes. They are. They're unavailable right now, but I mean, normally, our normal, we put it out for. Local bids and they would meet them, but we reached out and it sounds like. Our our suppliers are having difficulty. They're only able to get so much inventory. And a lot of that is more of the privately owned, the the higher end models. Is is how they're filling their orders and they're only getting so many.
As we talked, we just, we've had the same issue at conservation. One of the ways we've worked around it is modify our specs and or look for used. We're able to buy local, I think, each time. We even delayed a mower purchase just to. We we pressed, well, press Brian Preston on, hey, do you really need this? How origin is it now? I'm very much a supporter of local businesses and I'd like to give them the the opportunity to bid on this and this, both these bids are from the Des Moines area. Which is Iowa's better than out of state, so to speak, but. Unless you have a real pressing need, I would propose we. Attempt to find an alternative local solution.
Have you already done that evaluation about what's available local and what the specs are?
Yeah, we we reached out to them and, like I said, they're they are having a hard time. I think even one supplier recommended going state bid to fulfill these needs. But like I said, we we also like local, we we get very. Get along very well with our local suppliers. And we. Don't really want to do this in the future. It's just, like I said, just to kind of keep up.
It's a supply chain issue at this point. We can't get them local, so you're going to the state.
Right. Like I said, we could, we can bid these out for state, but it doesn't mean we have to have them. So what we could do is maybe just focus on the ones we, they're all necessary, but maybe we can tighten this up a little bit. And go just for the only ones that we need for. Out for state bid and then the rest of the ones would also go local and then we can. We can pick and choose just because you. Buy for the vehicle doesn't obligate you to purchase it. Let's go on to the next person. And even if you go for state letting, even local letting, you're not even guaranteed. It's it's the first come, first served. So there's a sense, a slight sense of urgency with some.
So maybe I'm confused. So our resolution says to approve the necessary documents for purchasing for new pickup trucks. Are you recommending we approve that or not approve it? Because that is clearly a a resolution to purchase these four.
Yes, we would like to get all four of these. For purchase on the state letting. I was just letting you know that just because we go for purchase doesn't mean we have to choose them if we can get them. We had, it doesn't necessarily mean we have to choose them. But. Like I said, some of these are just more of an urgency. Type trucks. But we are going local. We're we're still going local on the our remainders of the vehicles that we need and we're working with our locals.
Right, these are the ones you kind of need now. And you can't get them local.
Right. Did I miss anything here?
No, um, just to be clear, all the dealers now, including the state dealers. Tell you like if you order this vehicle and two months down the road, you don't want the vehicle, you don't have to take it just because of the times we're in. They'll just sell to someone else. So maybe it's, you know, we could go try the state waters, you know, see what we get back and also bid them out locally. And compare prices, options, well, they should be optioned the same, compare prices and and see who actually. Uh, can fulfill the order and make our decision then.
I like what you're both saying, but I'm still confused because I have a document in front of me saying I want to buy these four vehicles. There are. Four specs and I got four prices. So it seems pretty concrete that we're buying these four from the documents in front of us. I like what you're saying, but the documents we're approving are basically saying, purchase these. Is that not what we're saying?
My understanding is they want to put in a purchase order for these four. It's not like you can go down and pick them up. They have to see if they can get them.
So let's say there, you know, three months from now, you're saying you may cancel those orders?
Well, they.
Or rebid them?
According to the dealers in Des Moines, they're taking orders now, you know, they're getting these orders, they're stacking up. When the order books open, they said October seventeenth on the Ford side. Things open up and they will start ordering until it closes on them. And the state would have more buying power than the local dealership, so they may have those books open longer and be able to order more trucks. So we may go through all this work, send it to the state, and we may not get one truck ordered because the books will have closed. And so you'll be out of luck on ordering trucks. And that may happen on the local side, too. It might be the same thing.
Although we're not issuing any purchase orders to anyone locally.
No, we'd have to send that bid out, the current bid out and get that back. And the the local dealer said, if you send it out, make sure you put the delivery or the. The. Due date of that bid after the seventeenth, get us, give us four or five days. So they know, hey, yeah, your trucks got ordered or they didn't get ordered. I know it's confusing. It's a mess, but it's just the way the market.
I know you're trying to do the best, so that's.
They're basically ordering at the state level and they're going to go out for bid local. To see who can actually come up with the vehicle.
I'm comfortable with this. It sounds like, as you say, it's a new way that maybe we've not done in many years. I appreciate the notice. I appreciate the conversation, but. I want you to go forward and we need the vehicles. You know the specs, you know what you need. So I will be voting on this resolution.
Any other question?
Just a comment that I've been contacted by multiple dealers over my six-year term, so they're very sensitive. So hopefully this is playing well. Because we've done everything local to buy local and I agree, but they they're very sensitive to. Our actions related to purchases and I'm a very big advocate in my my current job and also this job related to small businesses.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Russell, thanks, Tim.
Is it possible for you to turn? Is there a fan on in the back? Something running there? That'd be great. Oh, he's got it up here. He's turned it off, I guess. Thank you. I appreciate you jumping up to do that. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to our board of supervisors meeting. We'll start with public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Individuals wishing to comment on a public hearing will be given the opportunity during that respective hearing. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board?
I'm not seeing Kelly Oaks on the agenda. This, I'm Cindy Raker. Good to see you. I've been involved with Kelly Oaks Park since two thousand sixteen. I thought we'd have more people here, but I think a lot of them are online. And I would just would like to address the board on the proposal for the four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to help this one point one million dollar project. We're looking at a nice walking trail through there, a pavilion and just overall enhancements so we can eventually get more park systems. Right now, if you were in Piasta and you wanted to have a family gathering, you wouldn't be able to rent a pavilion. There is one at the farmers or the fire station that's, but it'd be nice to have that second one, you know, something that we can have more of a family. And it'd be nice to have, you know, some sort of access. Parking would be the biggest thing. Thanks.
Thank you. Do they have anyone online wishing to address the board?
We do not.
Moving forward, we have proclamations. There are no proclamations for approval at this meeting. We'll move to the approval of the minutes of the meeting of September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the minutes of September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two as presented. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. There are no consent items for this meeting. There are no procurement procurement procedures for meetings. There are no public hearing. Have no plats. Now go to action items. Have a resolution to approve the hiring of deputies, assistants and clerks. Looks like a permanent part-time maintenance person and two Honeycrust employees.
Motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Have motion and a second to approve the hiring of deputies, assistants and clerks. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. We have a resolution to approve the temporary delayed travel restrictions of county roads on October thirtieth, twenty twenty-two for the Brown's Hometown Victory Foundation, twenty twenty-two. Five K Haunted Heritage Trail Fun Run.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution for Brown's Hometown Victory Foundation Fun Run.
Second.
Yeah, the motion, the second to approve the. Resolution for Brown's Hometown Haunted Heritage Trail Fun Run. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve necessary documents for the purchasing of four new pickup trucks from the state of Iowa. Russell was just discussing with us.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the necessary documents for the purchasing of the four new pickup trucks from the state of Iowa bid. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution, approval of the Tom Hancock Fiscal Year twenty twenty-three awards. Hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Motion to approve.
I will second that.
Discussion.
Motion and. Of discussion.
Well, I think. It's interesting that the meeting contained information about the. The training dollars and the recruitment dollars. I think that that proposal that came before us is ARPA and it was also intended. To be for recruitment and retention. I just wanted to make a comment. I don't necessarily need Ed at the podium, but I wanted to make a comment that. I thought the suggestions from the group were good. There's a way forward here that we might want to work with. And then also. The date that we're gonna actually meet with folks. Needs to be clarified, I think. That it says in the minutes, it's October twenty-sixth. So anyway, what that that is just, we'll need to get back to those folks, but I appreciate the work they do. And when I served on this committee last year, learned a great deal. So this organization works together incredibly well.
There was a considerable considerable amount of time spent discussing the twenty-five thousand for training and recruitment.
Yeah, I see that.
And trying to come up with ways to get more people involved.
That will eventually come before us. I'm sure it is a a contract for the ARPA program. We've not taken steps on that yet. So maybe that's known and we don't need to do that. I guess I'd ask you, Ed, is that coming soon to get that in the works?
That that as a contract, I'm I'm not sure. It's actually the county that I look at that as a, I'll do whatever you want, but that is actually a county. Initiative, not with an external organization, so that we may treat that one differently than the others.
Discussed at the meeting, Harley?
Right, it'd be the twenty-five thousand that the supervisors put in from the ARP fund, so. The fire departments for the training would just submit the bills for the training to the county and we pay them out of that account. There wouldn't necessarily be a contract because it covers all of the departments.
But it was more than training. I mean, when when Kevin Schmidt was.
Training and recruitment.
Right, and it's the recruitment issue.
We put twenty-five thousand towards that because we didn't know where to start.
Right.
So.
Right.
We've committed twenty-five thousand for three years.
So the intent is to to manage that process through Tom Berger and his organization and the. Various EMS and fire throughout the throughout the area, similar to what we do with the loan program and other types. So yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I think that's a good home for it.
Appreciate that, Jay.
Wait a.
My my brief is that the awardees are intending to. Descend on your meeting that you have later this month in the evening, whatever date you happen to select. So for a photo opportunity and then we'll, like last year, send that out as a media release at that time. So. Whenever the evening meeting is this later this month.
Tom Hancock.
Yes, those those individual, those organizations that have been awarded, I think, are planning to come here and be in the chamber for a photo op.
Have big checks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on that or? Motion and a second to approve Tom Hancock twenty twenty-three awards. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the chair to sign a letter of support for the city Dubuque Destination Iowa application, and that is for the Chaplain Schmidt. Island project, I believe, yeah.
And I will second that.
Have motion and a second to approve the resolution regarding the city Dubuque Destination Iowa application. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Just for under Communications and Maneuver Management Plan number six, seven, four, two, four. Bernard County Dairy. There's no action required on that, correct, Kevin?
Correct.
Go to open vacancies for information only. And we have personnel requisition, a motion to approve. The personnel requisition for a permanent part-time custodian, and that is. Replace a part-timer that is moving to full-time.
We had a part-time that moved to full-time?
We have, yeah, we had a vacation in a, not a vacation, we had a position vacated that was full-time. And our part-time employee has opted to take that full-time position. Opening up another part-time position. Recruitment is exceedingly difficult for these positions. We've lost a handful of our staff members to the Dubuque Community School District.
Sounds like a good thing, though. We've got an existing employee that's moving into a.
Absolutely, absolutely.
A good sign.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the personnel requisition for the permanent part-time custodian. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. We'll go into the public comment section. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries. In Iowa code prohibits the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Do we have anyone online wishing to address the board?
We do not.
Motion to adjourn. Or excuse me, recess.
Till nine twenty? I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to recess till nine twenty. Have a motion and a second to recess till nine twenty. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. We will return at nine twenty with our work session with DHS. We call the board of supervisors back in the session. Uh, nine twenty work session to discuss the UCL building for DHS. Who do we have on other Stella? Don't believe Laura was going to be able to make it. I think she had some staff.
Nicole Utoff and Anne Reinhardt are present from Health and Human Services.
Morning.
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 Kevin, my, oh, no, it is on. It's just red. Good morning, everyone.
I don't know if we can turn the microphone up or.
So, yep, I'm up. Uh, so I put a memo in the packet and also Lori had sent a bunch of documents um last week that I compiled and put in there as well uh for you. Just giving some background and some discussion on um what we've already talked about on relocating the DHS office um into a new location. Um, as we're all aware, the current facility has been acquired by a new owner who plans to do some uh reconstruction of that building and has stated that there is not going to be room for DHS there during during and after the construction. So um the proposal is to relocate the DHS office into a different facility um that is owned by the same owner. He's given us a couple of different lease options to uh think about. So, okay. Um, so I think maybe that's part of the discussion that uh I I laid out some steps that we would need to take in order for this move to occur. So the first step of all of this would be that the board would decide, yes, we are going to move. We are going to execute a lease and what that lease term would be. And then um we'll bring back a lease for full review and execution um on a later date in a couple of weeks, probably once we've fully vetted any lease. And then, once that starts, DHS can notify the state. They can start the ICN line uh move. So they've stated that can take up to six months. Um, and also the property owner has said uh construction of the new space could take up to three months. So that'll start the clock on those items. Once we have a better idea of when those will be complete and the ICN line installed, we can schedule the physical office move.
I don't think there's. We don't have a whole lot of option in it. They're going to have to move. I think this space works for them. I've been through it with Lori and they are happy with the space. The uh owner is uh willing to redo the space to make it feasible for them. And the best part is it comes at substantially less rent than what we are currently paying, so.
So each lease option that he presented is less than our current lease in the facility that we're in. Um, both at the five or ten year gross or net lease option. Um, the construction costs are part of the lease. So he stated that the last time he was here. Um, also, any costs that we spend upfront, so the moving, if there's new furnishings, whatever those costs might be, what happens is those are compiled. We pay them upfront. They're given to the state. The state will create an amortization schedule of seven to ten years based on each different piece of it. We do a quarterly reimbursement request for DHS. So they will reimburse at the whatever the rate is in effect at that reimbursement each quarter for that amortization period. So say we have fifty thousand dollars of expenses. It goes on a line item on that form and gets reimbursed at around thirty percent, thirty three percent right now um over that seven or ten year period.
Thirty percent of the fifty thousand?
Yes.
Okay. And maybe you can comment about the build out costs.
So the build out costs are all wrapped into the lease. So whatever lease that we select, um, he stated that the build out is part of that lease rate. So we're not paying for that separately. Um, it'll be wrapped into the lease. So currently we are um occupying about fifteen thousand square feet at a cost of about a hundred and fifty four thousand a year. The state did make some changes after COVID on teleworking. So DHS is able to downsize into a smaller space, which is great. Um, and so we'll be taking on less space uh reducing the lease rates. So no matter how long of a lease we select, based on what he has provided to us, he's provided five and ten year options and he's provided gross and triple net lease options.
So that's the nature of my question, Stella, which is, I understand that the total rental that we're paying is substantially less um square footage. That that's a different mechanism, but the gross, the total number coming down. The cost to costs are not known. Um, do we, we're moving DHS as a different situation where there's, are we responsible for participating in snow removal? Um, you know, triple net is more than utilities. It's some other considerations. Obviously, uh, there's real estate taxes on the building. So do we anticipate, do we have a cost sheet for what the county county costs will be under the new uh tenancy?
I don't have that right now. We're currently in a gross lease in the Nestler Center. So all of the costs are wrapped in. Um, Nicole or Anne, you you could uh jump in. Do we pay a janitorial separate? I think that might be the only thing we pay separately.
Yes, that is the only thing that we pay separate is the janitorial and supplies. Um, but would maybe Chris have the information of what the taxes and insurance are even for the current building? Or this either building that would show that piece and.
Right, the current lease is not triple net. We are not paying anything toward those.
No, I was just saying, though, that if that he had what, if we went to the the triple N one instead of the gross, Chris should be able to provide, you know, what is he paying on insurance, uh taxes, snow removal, utilities? He should, he already owns that building. He should be able to show what what our portion could be if we switch to that. Obviously, the gross is, I think, a better better deal for the for the lease, but that's just my opinion.
I I want to make this move and I appreciate the difference between the gross and the triple net. But we're saying to taxpayers, we're going to save money. And all I'm asking is, let's see if we can be sure that we're saving money. Because if we have to share in snow removal, we may not be sharing, saving money.
Sure, I can reach out to Chris and get all of the costs that would be part of the triple net. I go, oh, he is in the room, sorry. Um, we can welcome him up here to address that if we want to.
You want to come up?
Good morning, Chris Miller, Miller Companies. Um, here to answer obviously any questions, but we'll touch on the uh the different lease uh structures here real quick. Uh, so what I did was I figured it up and let me back up one step. The building's been vacant since I owned it. So there is no historical electric usage or gas usage. You know, we do the bare minimum why it's empty to, you know, so things don't freeze. You know, it's just, I don't really have an exact number. But what I did when I figured these lease rates out is I took twenty five hundred dollars, which um I thought was a pretty healthy uh reserve for taxes, um some insurance, uh maintenance, snow removal, all those costs. I mean, there are some hard numbers that I do have, like the snow removal. Um, but it just gets into the electrical and and uh gas usage that I don't have historical data on. So I went back and tried to figure out to the best of my ability. And what I thought was pretty fair either way is twenty five hundred dollars. So if you look at this, it it either way you look at it, that's about what that cost is going to be. Um, you know, with will fluctuate a little bit probably, um, but it's not going to be much off of that twenty five hundred dollars per month. So that, and that's what I did for the triple net versus the gross. If the county is going to be responsible for that, I backed out the twenty five hundred dollars. That would be my cost for that. And I typically prefer to do triple net leases just for the sheer fact that the, you know, there's some responsibility or ownership taken by the tenants when it comes to uh utility usage.
Just cooling and.
Yeah, I mean, you just you you become more aware of your usage when, you know, it falls on, you know, the tenant versus the owner.
So if I look at the ten year, uh, let's look at a ten year gross lease. And are you telling me that all utilities are included in that price?
In the gross lease it is.
Okay.
Yeah, so essentially the difference between the five and the ten year lease is I incorporated some, I had a baseline that I was trying to get to for rent, which I explained to Harley. I took in the cost of the construction. And then I basically amortized that over the amount, you know, it's either over sixty months or a hundred and twenty months. And that's the only difference. And and I kind of gave them the ten year lease just to show that, you know, if you're truly looking to uh cut some some budget, obviously, ten year lease is good for a landlord. Um, so I don't have a problem with that, but it also saves you guys money on the monthly. Just stretches out the construction costs over that um hundred and twenty month period versus the sixty.
So that's our true final cost.
It is.
For ten years, you have two lease extensions in your sample lease.
Yeah.
Either I make, I either I'm paying too much at the beginning or, I mean, we're looking out into the uncertainty. I I just don't know that it's, seems like a good deal for the county. If you look at projected uh fuel costs and maintenance costs going forward. So there'll not be a rent adjustment for ten years.
No, it's it's in the lease. I mean, as a landlord, having a tenant in the space for ten years, there's some benefit to that also.
Like a number we could put in the budget. I just said it seems like a number we can put in the budget.
I'm good with either way, uh, the uh triple N or the gross lease, uh, like you said, it's an unknown with the electrical, the gas. We could maybe save money if we were paying it. Maybe it's the other way, I don't know.
Well, and I will say with the um utility usage, you know, during the construction, we're we're going to put all LED lights in. We're going to put all new HVAC in. So I mean, we're not, you're not moving in there and having twenty year old, you know, utility, uh, you know, mechanicals. So I mean, from that standpoint, that's another unknown because you just don't know how it's going to perform. Now, it's going to be definitely better than it was, but we just don't know. You know, there's no historical data for that.
Right.
But we are going to make it as energy efficient as possible. So, and that's why I don't even mind uh essentially either either form. And that's why I put it in writing because I feel pretty comfortable either way.
Are you going to be charging the county for those kinds of improvements? The new HVAC and the new LED lights, your new electrical?
No, so all the construction costs are incorporated into this. What you see on this paper is your monthly rent minus or or in addition to any uh janitorial or things like that. But I mean, in the in the in the gross lease, that is the final number.
I understand that, and I guess I'm asking you about the costs that you're going to incur to make your entire building, new HVAC, new electrical. Is the county paying for that?
They are not.
Okay, so we're paying for the specifics to make this space right for DHS as a tenant.
Yes.
That's fair.
Jay.
The total square foot that you have in the diagram is eleven thousand, three fifty five?
Yes, yep.
That's what we're talking about.
Yep.
Okay. Um, yeah, I said, I think as I mentioned the last week or two weeks ago, uh, appreciate you offering this up um as our new uh landlord, so to speak. Um, I think it's a win. It seems like everything's falling into place. And Stella, I appreciate your work uh with DHS going through and doing the timetable and all that stuff. So led into the move costs. Um, so, yeah, I think everything's in front of us. I I would uh probably look to a a a shorter lease, uh, five years uh is what I would look for, so we don't uh lock in future boards for longer periods. But the five year gross lease is kind of the number I'm looking for. And what Stella indicated, that still would be lower than what we're paying today, correct? Like a win.
Stella, do you have a recommendation for us and then also for the length of the lease?
Um, I think the gross lease is a good way to mitigate risk. Uh, we have a known cost instead of an unknown, so um. We have a known cost instead of an unknown, so as CPA, I like that, just in general. But the five or ten year is really the board's discretion. I think both are great. It depends on how long you want to lock DHS into that space. There are big costs to the state, I believe, for the ICN move, so I'm sure that they would appreciate a longer lease. But I think that's completely your discretion.
I think Lori had said they were at the current location for approximately forty years.
I think when I went back into the files, it looked like about nineteen eighty two decision was made to move them there. So they were moved in about eighty two or eighty three.
Good run.
Very good runs. I mean, I would be more in favor of going with the ten year lease also and locking it in for the ten years, because I don't see DHS being that anxious to move again once they get into this new space, so.
My, my, my fear would be that the state would be interested in changing things. And that would cause more challenges for us in the current lease. So I, I don't a lot of changes related to the state that I'm not familiar with. So that's why I tend to, to do a shorter lease, but we can chat about that further if needed, but I mean, both of them look like good opportunities.
We went with a shorter lease. I mean, I would expect that, I would want the option to renew, which is already what you're proposing. There's going to be lease extension. So if the rate is, I mean, it, it doesn't look like it's actually a ten year lease, Craig. It looks like it's a base lease with an option to renew with no increased costs.
Right, so what, what you have in front of you is a sample lease. But really, what we needed to do was maybe get together a little bit and, and plug in some of the things that are highlighted. And we just didn't get a chance to do that last week. But you know, the, the next version you have, I get, I think basically, if you look at it, the, I, I don't have it in front of me, but the lease will adjust, I think it's a, maybe like a three percent adjustment for the first five years and then another three percent after that. So it's not, it's not going to be a jump and it all can be locked in. And if you need some verbiage in there to, you know, that's in addition to what we have, we can do that. But that's not the intention is to get it, you know, do a five year lease and then year six, the rent doubles or, you know, goes up twenty percent. That's not really.
But we are not talking about two things, because one number is a ten year gross lease with the term determined, right? That's the cost. The other thing that you and I are now talking about is five year lease with an option to renew with maybe a three percent increase. Which again, I'm not saying that's unfair, but that's not the same as the base lease continuing for ten years.
Right, so upon any renewal, there typically is a, an adjustment in the rent. And that will all be stated in the final lease. I mean, right there is kind of like my boilerplate lease that you have with the details that I did have at the time.
I think we'd need DHS contact the state and see what they would want for a lease if they wanted five or if they'd prefer a ten.
State would agree that a, any buyout of the lease necessary due to estate change would be their cost one hundred percent. Because I think that's what we're trying to do is anticipate what the state may do over the next ten years. And then the county's got a ten year lease and somebody's going to have to buy that out if the state makes a change.
I think we'd be hard pressed to get the state to agree with that before we made this move. So.
They're investing, they're investing a lot of money also, so. They got to move the ICN line and everything, so.
We're not going to be able to negotiate that term, I was saying that.
So but to see what, where they stand, they may know if there's going to be some.
I think it's good to ask, yeah. I think it's good to ask, I just don't have any expectation that we'll get a, in writing, a guarantee.
I'm not interested in holding up the lease for a state confirmation that we don't think is ever going to come anyway. I mean, we would like to move this forward, I certainly would, on the timeline that's proposed by DHS and the attachments we had today.
So can I, can I just jump in just a little bit? We just signed for the Des Moines County for ten years.
Yes.
Just as FYI. So if that helps you with your concern, the state was okay with the ten year lease for another county.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
I'd like to see the ten year gross, but I would like to see the language put together, Craig, so I see what it is you're talking about with extensions that, I don't know if this is a full ten year and it will have an option to renew at ten? Or if you're talking about two fives with an option to renew at five?
Yeah, typically it'd be the, if you went the ten year route, there'd be two five year options after that.
After the ten.
After the ten, yeah. Or, or it just reads as two five year options regardless if it's a five or ten year lease in, in, in that current form that you have.
I'm good with the ten year gross lease.
And so I've been kind of on the outside of trying to acquire a new building. So if we do a ten year lease, that would shut the door on a new building discussion.
Or this, yes, for the same reason.
Well, that's what I asked last, last week when they were here too, that going forward like this closes the door on a new building. Certainly, any building that would include, I mean, this was our, one of our main motivations in looking at additional property was those stressors of DHS.
The largest employee count or one of the group. So, okay, good.
So add the ten year gross into the lease, present the final version and.
I'm still at five, but I think you got two tens, so I think you're, you're good to go with the ten.
All right.
I think ten would be the best option.
I'd like to see the language, but yeah, that's where I am too. And I just want to publicly thank again, Mr. Miller for coming forward and helping us make a definite decision about this. He just has asked us to do this for many, many years and we needed you, I think, to be the, the moving person as the landlord, I appreciate that. And then I would give public gratitude to Supervisor Padoff, who's also dogged this, to move this on and continue to make this again with Stella too, I mean, our budget director's been behind the scenes. So I'm excited to be here with the DHS staff. I know you've got time invested as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Anne, and thank you very much, Chris and Stella.
Yep, so we'll come back in a week or two on an agenda with a lease for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Stella. Okay, we'll move on to our nine forty work session, the discussion and possible action on ERP requests. First one up is.
Are they published in the agenda of any particular order?
There's no particular order.
Okay.
That door open? And keep having people come in, be great to have it open, yeah, yeah, open. So people get in and out.
Would be my, my suggestion that we look at the Board of Health's request. It's the oldest and in terms of the language that's been before us, can we take them first?
Sure.
This letter that, Amy, I appreciate you preparing the memorandum, setting forth the details, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for this opportunity. I'm here today with Stacy Killian, our interim director. And I noticed on Zoom, we have Laura, who's our assistant director, Hendrick and Mike Fidgen. Jess Schultz might, or Jess Smith might also be on as well. So today I'm here to ask you for fifteen thousand dollars to fund a consultant to help us develop a strategic plan for the Dubuque County Board of Health. In looking through records, we have not found any evidence of a strategic plan being done. And even if one had been done, it hasn't been done post pandemic. So we need just some money to hire a consultant to help us develop a plan to have the best county board of health in the state.
So the proposal has been brought up and for some reason never moved and totally in favor of funding it, that we get this right. Let me get a new director out there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think creating a strategic plan is a wise move. And I know we've faced some additional hurdles related to finding directors and assistant directors. And so it's a constant headwind, but I appreciate you and the rest of the health board members plowing through that. So happy to support this.
Thank you.
I, as a liaison to the Board of Health, I've shared my comments with you at several meetings. So I am going to support this as well, primarily because I think that it's important to invest in the current board that we have. We have had void turnover, we have folks right now and before with great credentials, great life experience and they volunteer. Someone asked me recently at a public meeting, well, is it, are they paid volunteers? No, they're not. And there's a tremendous amount of time invested. And this seems a modest request to help you have organized professional strategic conversation. And I think that that's something I've certainly heard, heard the Board of Health ask for repeatedly. And the timing never seems to be perfect. So that's my primary motivation in, in supporting this modest request to have that kind of conversation occur.
Thank you so much, we appreciate the support.
Do you want to make a formal motion?
Listed as impossible actions.
Yeah, the board would make a motion to direct us to bring forth the resolution and then a contract would subsequently follow that. There we go, no contract, because it's us.
So based on a motion today, you can go forward with language, helping them get their consultant organized.
Yes, yes, really helps.
The fifteen thousand dollar request to the Board of Health for purposes of hiring a professional individual to help with the strategic plan.
I will second that.
I have a motion in a second to approve fifteen thousand for strategic planning for the Board of Health. All in favor signify by aye.
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 On behalf of the Board of Health, I thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Stacy.
Okay, next we have, we want to go with the chamber request.
Sure.
The chamber request was for five hundred thousand for two years. Revenue guarantee for ultra low cost carrier to provide service at the airport. Have any questions, Molly is here. Start the discussion.
Todd Dalsing is.
Todd's on here too.
Yep, good morning.
Morning, Todd.
So I guess I'll, I'll start. I support this request. But I don't want this to get overrun over years of a quarter million dollar investment by the county into paying for air service. We currently have federal funds and the, all of the taxpayers and citizens I speak to throughout the county support using federal funds at this level to support the airport. So I believe the county should be in for our share, the five hundred thousand dollars over two years. But I also think, and I raise with citizens, that it's likely this is the new way forward. That we are probably going to be challenged and have to pay for airport service to have carriers, legacy or others, I think it's a new world. So we should be discussing what kind of number can we put in the budget to be anticipating that commitment, I think we're going to have to make. We did a previous commitment, Supervisor Wickham and I voted on the, looking to the western expansion into Denver. We made a commitment of sixty thousand dollars, was it? Fifty, a few years back. So certainly this board has a history of working with the chamber and the airport commission to not stand in the way and be financial partners. But I don't know what the number is going to be for the budget and that's a discussion we'll have at budget time. But I did want to at least talk to colleagues to say, I think we, you know, we're going to spend federal dollars, I imagine, today, right, our funding. But do you feel the same, that we're likely to have to need to support the airport going forward as well?
There has been some support over the years. I think this request gets us out two years to where there's going to be some more pilots, this pilot shortage may be alleviated a little bit, where we can maybe get another legacy carrier in. There may be some boss down the road, but that's unforeseen. Doing nothing isn't going to work. We have to do something. If we're going to wait for the federal government to come in and bail us out, well, that's not going to happen. Then we're going to end up losing businesses. We have to have some air service. This isn't ideal by any means, but without having the option of a legacy carrier, this is the best we can do. We have the option of marketing on the other end and trying to bring people here.
From Fort Myers.
People will fly from here to there, why can't they come to Dubuque? We have the river, we have the River Museum, we have river boats, we have the casinos, we have Galena. We have a lot of attractions here. We can draw people here just as well as they can draw people there. If you're not going to try, I know they're not going to come, but we have to try.
That's not the basis of my vote though, to anticipate there'll be enhanced tourism. I mean, I don't think that's, this is to support the economic necessity. And as Molly Grover said in her memo, that, I mean, the existential, the essential amenity that an airport is.
I support as well. So I, I think having a functioning airport is one of the, the core services that the community needs to provide. The question I do have is related to maybe either Todd or Molly or possibly can we enter this either today or in the near future, is who are we partnering with? And so very pleased the chamber, I serve on the chamber board as an ex officio, that they brought this forward, that they've been the, the lead. I'm not sure if that's exactly who the check's going to go to. So if we have further clarification on that today or in a future meeting, I think that would, that would help me. Because I know there's other partners obviously involved with the Airport Commission and certainly the city of Dubuque as well. That's my one big outstanding question.
And I, I have several as well, there are questions to be answered. When, I mean, we all know the tragedy that is Fort Myers. And so I know Molly and I've spoken privately about that being anticipated that we're going to have to kind of work on that issue. It's unlikely we're going to be, have a contract, an aggressive contract going to Fort Myers in the near future. Although I think the contract terms of when it begins is important. I also would like to know billing. I think the funds should remain at the county and they should be billed, just like the stack of bills there, so that we're not releasing funds of at a million dollars, this is a minimum guarantee. So the funds can stay here and we could be billed, I think we thought, maybe it would be quarterly. So we would see progress, we would see the data come through as to costs and embarkment, so we would continue to see this unfold. It's not as if we won't be monitoring even at the county as we look at the expenditure of funding. I would welcome you to the podium, Molly.
Good morning supervisors and Todd Dalsing is on the line with us as well. And I'm joined by Jason White with GDDC, who's on the air service task force here in support today. The Chamber Board of Directors, GDDC, the DRA, all sent letters of support. And I think this is very good and healthy discussion as we look for some short term solutions to a long term problem. We've all had conversations over recent weeks and past months with this proposed opportunity. Anne, as you indicated, the contract in terms of how we believe that's going to work, will the monies be held by the county? And so the requests come to the airports and then the airport then would request funds. That invoice is going to, according to the draft agreement, is going to be on a quarterly basis. We too, Todd and I, I think I speak for both of us as close partners working on air service, share the concerns and the challenges that we face over the next two years. And while we don't know what the future holds, we do know that we have a, a US DOT SCASTI grant. So when we talk about revenue, that's one point three million dollars that we have to continue to negotiate for legacy carriers. Two years certainly buys us time for things to be figured out. The county was very supportive when we, back in twenty. When we, back in twenty twenty, when we asked for matching funds from all our community partners. To supervisor Wickham's question as well, who else is at the table? Well, obviously the chamber is at the table, not just in concept, but financially supporting. As is the Dubuque Regional Airport, as is there's a, a grant at, at the state of Iowa. As is the City of Dubuque, where Todd and I in partnership will present to the city council tonight as well. So it's truly a partnership effort, I think, to supervisor Potof's comments. It's certainly not a silver bullet. It is not ideal. It is the best short term strategy, again, to a long term problem. This is not in lieu of legacy service. It's not in lieu of going to major hubs. This is an and. This is not the end. This is the beginning. And this is one small step to putting some points on the board, getting us in the game, protecting our airport, protecting our community. And frankly, giving us an opportunity to capture some market share, which has been not accessible to us before because we have not had an ultra low cost carrier. So we certainly appreciate your, your strong consideration and, and I'm happy to answer what other questions. I don't know if Todd has anything else to add. Todd?
Um, yeah, thanks, Molly. No, I was just gonna, I think I heard a question regarding the damages to Fort Myers. And obviously the, the carrier that we're working with is also monitoring that. So obviously we'll be assessing the damages and the, you know, the impact on the community and how that impacts our customers and recovery times. And then, of course, at the appropriate time, make that determination. So as you all know, we're looking at four flights a week to Florida, two to Orlando, two to Fort Myers. Um, you know, potentially. We could start service even with the Orlando flights that we may have to postpone the Fort Myers service. But again, we need to, we'll need to work with the carrier and assess, assess all that. I think that was one of the questions. I think Anne had another question regarding the start of the contract. So I mean, we're in the final phase of negotiations. We're putting together the financial package. And that's why we're here today with our request. Once that's completed, we'll be able to make our final offer to the carrier. And then we will enter into the air service agreement about two months before the start of service. That obviously would allow us to begin the marketing advertising campaign, set up our ground handling operations, things of that sort. And then once we start the actual service. And, and Anne was correct when she said that this will be billed on a quarterly basis. So let's say we start the first flight in first calendar year or first quarter calendar year of twenty three. We would not see an invoice from the carrier until the end of that quarter. So potentially second calendar year quarter of twenty twenty three. I think I caught a couple of the questions. Happy to elaborate on the, either of those are.
You answered my questions, Todd. I appreciate that. I do have another question. The name of the carrier has never been discussed. It's a to be named carrier. When, I mean, obviously many people in the room know who the carrier, we anticipate who the carrier is. It is not a legion. So that's been the most frequent question I've had. When will that be known? And do you have a rollout for that as part of like a, when you get.
Yes.
A marketing plan for that?
Yep, yes. We're, obviously we're, we're still in negotiations. And once we execute the agreement, and then of course that'll be part of that marketing rollout. Absolutely.
You've not asked us not to share the name, but I won't because I'll let you do what you do professionally, which is do the marketing.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Todd, this is Jay Wickham. Can you elaborate a little bit on, on who is contracting with, with who? And what the county specifically role will be in this contractor agreement? Or is that in the works?
Did we lose Todd?
One airport will contract.
We're losing you, Todd.
I'll try and pinch hit until he's, until he's back. So the airport is going to be contracting with the proposed ULCC carrier.
For the MR, minimum revenue guarantee portion of that. Then there'll be another agreement that the airport will contract directly with the carrier. To potentially, again, depending on the executed agreement, of course, but right now to provide the ground handling services. So Dubuque Jet Center, Dubuque Regional Airport will be handling all the ground handling operations. For the aircraft. So those are the two agreements with the air carrier and the airport. And then the, of course, the airport has waived fees for a year, has committed, as Molly said, marketing funds. And then other than that, the agreements that we will enter into, I would be between the airport, the city and the airport, the county. For the minimum revenue guarantee portion of the air service agreement. If I, if I.
You cut out on the contract. So we didn't, didn't really hear your, your answer. So I. Will the county, some, Todd, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm still with you.
Okay. So we heard the last part of the airport will contract with the county and the airport will contract with the city. And so will, will the county contract with the, the carrier? Have any.
Airport? Yeah, no, the airport will sign the agreement with the carrier.
Okay. The Airport Commission? Or the City of Dubuque?
Yes, yes. Airport Commission.
Airport Commission. Okay, thank you. I think I understand.
Yes.
And the invoice will come quarterly to the airport and the airport will request funds from the county.
Airport Commission. Okay. And Auditor de Grotto is our representative on that.
Yes.
I imagine it will meet our auditing standards then.
I'm okay for today. Thank you. It's been very helpful.
That is also with. Possibility of action. Forward with that.
I would like to have a better understanding of the contractual agreements. I'm just learning about those now. I would like to see those documents before I move forward formally. I think of, I think the board has verbally supported this and we have a trail of other documents to, to follow. But that's where I'm at today.
I'm. I understand what you're saying. I think that you want to see the contract. I think that they, the parties and the partners need maybe a firm commitment from us that we're doing that.
Have you seen the contract?
No, but I don't know that I'm going to see the contract. I've asked contract questions, Jay, just like you're asking now. And I've not, I don't know that I'm the contractor.
This is a reminder here, the, if the board were to take action and move forward today, it would be. Our formal process of putting this into a resolution first, you still would have total and complete control over the contract process that we would have. To be able to change language, go through things and, and even ended at that point as well. So it's not the, this isn't the final, final step. If the board did authorize us.
The contract is actually between the airport and.
Correct, but we would have a contract. We would have.
We would have a contract.
Commission.
With the airport.
Correct.
So I guess I'm confused at which contract you want to see, the one we have with the airport or what the airport has with the carrier?
I just learned about it three minutes ago. So about who is contracting with whom? That was my question. So I just learned about that and I, I think I'm, I'm asking just to, to see that.
Yeah, our, our. Our contract with the commission would be based on the commission's contract with the carrier. So if, if the board were to give us approval today to move forward with the resolution, that gets the process moving forward. That can get a little more contract language finalized. And then the board can address any con, any contract questions they have regarding our contract with the commission or their contract with the carrier. At a later date, but it gives everybody a place to be and helps keeping the process move forward.
I think we have that with consensus right now. So I'm not sure what we're.
I would be looking for a motion so we could formally prepare a resolution that could get that process started on our end formally. But you still have complete care and control throughout that entire process to change along the way.
So Supervisor Wickham, are you wanting to see the contract between the Airport Commission and the carrier?
There's just a lot of moving parts. I very much support this. I've been involved from, from the beginning and an advocate with, with the Chamber. And the Chamber's done a tremendous job to bring other local partners and they've been the lead, those partners being Greater Dubuque, being the Racing Commission. You know, the City of Dubuque as well. So that's all been good. But there's, there's a lot of pieces here that I still just want to understand.
I'm moving it forward, not. Saying you're not going to have that. It just gives them some groundwork to get the contract set up that they can show it to you.
I don't think anything we do right now would prohibit that. So, so I'm very much a supporter of this. If you want to do a motion, move forward, go for it. I'm just very interested in understanding what it is and who's contracting with whom. I just learned that three minutes ago.
I've, I have been asking contract questions as well. And I've come to realize that that's not, that's not going to be what we are. We're not going to be negotiating those terms. We are doing a ARPA request, just like other folks have and all the many that we've been approving. So I don't know that, I, I'm not in any way standing in your way of learning all that. And I think on the Chamber Board, you probably will learn it. I don't, I'm not in, I'm not in that conversation that you are. And that's great. And I appreciate you being there, but I'm satisfied that I know all that I can know. And I'm comfortable and I will make the motion to approve the five hundred thousand dollar ARPA request from the Chamber. Or the support of the ultra low cost carrier to be paid over two years.
Motion? I will second the motion.
For clarity, is it five hundred thousand or five twenty five?
Five hundred thousand is what the ARP request is for.
Bring up the memo for me.
It does say five twenty five on that. I noticed that too, or five fifty, I think it said, but it's five hundred thousand.
Hate to shortchange you.
Give me a second.
Molly, is there something I need to know about a number?
What's, what's the document here?
Supervisor Wickham, this is Todd Dulce.
Go ahead, Todd.
Okay, so I think you might be referring to the, maybe the memo that was originally sent to the Airport Commission. That was attached to your application and on page five under budget. Where we talk about above negotiations required funding totals and FY. That was what we were working on internally with our city budget and what we were, kind of our shortfalls were. So for example, in FY twenty three, the five hundred and twenty five thousand, that was a twenty five thousand dollars. That was still pending Chamber approval. That was approved last week's board meeting. So that's, and then the five seventy five and twenty four, the seventy five thousand has not yet been approved. Formally in the budget process with the city council and therefore giving the Airport Commission, you know, approval to use those funds. So for the purpose of these discussions, the request is only for the minimum revenue guarantee portion of five hundred thousand dollars. For the city and five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand dollars from the county.
Wonderful. Thank you for clarifying that. Just want to make sure we didn't shortchange you.
No, no, appreciate the great question. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's good.
Have a motion in a second to approve the ARP request for the Chamber of Commerce Air Service project. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Carries. Thank you, Molly. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, supervisors. We appreciate your support.
Yep, yep. Well done, Todd. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to our next ARP request is the city of Piasta. Request for four hundred and seventy five thousand for park amenities at Kelly Oaks Park. Trail and restrooms, leave. Parking lot.
I'm glad to see that Annette is here. I have some questions for you. If you wouldn't mind just going to the podium, would you do that? So the application indicates that you're seeking just two percent of your total project value. And I just wondered, is that a clerical error?
It is, it is.
So what percentage are you seeking from the county, actually?
From our total budget, it would be about ten percent.
The project is how much?
I mean, one, one point one.
And how much are you seeking from the county?
Four hundred and seventy five thousand.
That's forty two percent, right? Okay. So it's, it's a forty two percent request to the county of your total project.
Correct.
And then something else here in the contract, in your application, it said. This, it's about, describe what happens if you don't receive a hundred percent of the requested funding. And I would just like to, it talks about the DRA. I don't know if you've got a DRA request outstanding. So if you don't receive four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in the county, what's next?
We will pursue other funding opportunities through grants. We will be doing fundraising and then we will also have to budget aggressively to be able to, to finish this project.
You have a hundred thousand dollars set aside right now inside your, your current fiscal year twenty three budget, correct?
That is correct.
You know, one of my thoughts was, is to. My high dollar would be to match that amount of money that's already currently set aside. That's the commitment that the city has made to date. I don't, I don't know if anybody else has questions for Annette.
I guess. Obviously you're aware ARP funds are getting pretty low. Little confused as to why this came in so late when this project has been going on for so long. I think if this would have been in when the original request were in. I think it. Was a very good project. Coming in kind of way at the end. It's like, why, I, I guess, why was there such a delay in getting this in?
Well, originally when we looked at this, we were told that there wasn't going to be any monies left over. So that's why we didn't apply. And then we had a meeting where Anne was. In that meeting and she'd asked us to go ahead and submit the project for review. So that's why it was so late. Another reason why this project has been so delayed is through COVID. This was something that was started back in twenty eighteen. We all know what happened in the latter part of twenty nineteen and into twenty twenty. So that kind of put the, the project back. So the city committed to the hundred thousand to at least kickstart the project, knowing that we were probably going, going to have to fund through grants, through fundraising. And any other opportunities that would come to us. So in speaking with Anne, seeing the opportunity, we went ahead and we applied late. So we're very well aware of that. But we feel this project is a necessity. Piasta is growing so rapidly right now. And the opportunities for us to get this project underway will only lead to several other trails. That eventually would connect to the Heritage Trail.
Well, I think it's a, a great project. I'm not passionate project.
We do too.
There's a, there obviously is some resistance. Did receive a letter regarding that, that. Things. Person thinks that this was just kind of a throw together and. Throw it in type thing.
No, absolutely not.
But everybody's entitled to their opinion.
Sure. And this park, this project will be there forever. And the connectivity to the other projects that we have lined up and will only enhance and make Piasta more attractive community to move to and Dubuque County. And they'll use the airport to get here.
Well, it's all, it's all the amenities that we need. Well, it's all, it's all the amenities that we need to continue to be a growing county and I appreciate that.
I'd like to thank for the marketing on the other side.
You're welcome.
I would be, um, I mean, I'm generally in support of it. I don't know that I'm at the level of 475,000.
I don't have any questions for you. So unless your board does, you're, you're welcome to stay there or sit down. Um. So a couple of things, uh. We still have funds left. So we could have Stella Rondi come up and tell you what they are, but roughly 1.6. We just. Uh, agreed to about 500,000 today out of that. So we, we have ample funds available that are federally gifted to us. Uh, Piasta is the one, one, I lived in Piasta for 18 years. Uh, I've been in Kelly Oaks Park before it was Kelly Oaks Park, just marveling at the, the oak trees and just, uh. It's a really nice place. Um, and Piasta's, uh, been, been wonderful, uh, for my family to, to live in. Um. Piasta was not the only one that was late. So we could go through that whole list of who was late that this board did fund. So if you hold that against them, I'm not sure if that's a, that's a fair argument. Um, so we have funds. Their applications in, we have a long precedent of supporting. Those after the September deadline, probably in the tune of 10 or 20. Community projects. So, um, and when I look at the growth of our county. Roughly 70 plus percent of all of our new tax dollars are coming from Highway 20. So it's Asbury, Piasta, Eppworth, Farley. And we can throw in a few others, uh, outside the city of Dubuque. And so I was very pleased that we've had. Community projects come forward. In Farley, pretty big number. In Cascade, pretty big number. Eppworth was a decent number for their park systems as well, having to be baseball related. And we can go on and on. Um, so the board thankfully was very supportive of those, those projects. So. Um, I feel really bad penalizing Piasta because you're the last. Money's not gone. The federal funds are still available and the process is still open and. You are fairly participating in the process and I think very well. Um, I've received emails and the stack of letters that we received a couple of weeks ago. I can't remember how many were in there.
31.
31. Um, we're all in favor. So I've probably. I'm probably up to 70 to one. Uh, for the project and, and I did receive a comment, uh, from a citizen that was less favorable for the project. Uh, so for those reasons, uh, you know, and I, and I love parks and I love trails. I'll, I'll be a firm supporter of this. And I think in the act of fairness, I would. Hopefully supervisors will, will also see favorably for this project and the funding request.
If I might. This is not, this is the last one that presented to us. There are more in the hopper, so to speak. There are more, uh, contacts coming from other individuals because we've never, as a board, said, we're done. We have accepted, I think, nearly as many late applications as we did in the initial round. So to Supervisor Potoff's comment about it, had it been earlier with this dollar amount. It would have maybe changed how other funds were distributed. I think several times we've thought, well, now we're closed. There's nothing left pending. But those comments and the inquiries continue to come forward from Dyersville, from my hometown, Asbury. And the question is, and then at the conversation you and I had, I said, we never received an application from Piasta. Why not? And you said, well, isn't it over? I said, oh, and we're accepting late applications all the time. So it's never over. I don't know. I mean, citizens have asked me to stop giving away half million dollars, million dollars. It, it's, it's disconcerting to them. That we're giving away such large numbers, whether it's, when I say it's federal rescue money, they're like, well, that's still taxpayer money. You know, it's still taxpayer funds. And so that's a concern, you know, we have to also address and balance somehow. The many millions of dollars that since you and I spoke and that, that the county has learned, we need to invest into our own. System inside this building to make it safer for the employees who work here for heating HVAC. And airflow, this building doesn't have airflow that brings fresh air out to help with, um. COVID prevention and disease spread prevention. So the shifting, uh, those blocks shift all the time. So I, I know you understand that as well. I'm very thankful that you responded as I, I thought you would, and you did the professional that you are. So.
Stella, what is the balance on, uh? ARP funds?
Well, after the awards, um, that you agreed upon this morning, we're at 1,086,689 dollars left.
Million dollars.
Little over a million dollars, yeah.
When I lived in Piasta a bunch of years ago. I asked, uh, the developer, the largest developer in Piasta, why they kept gifting. Uh, community assets away, uh, the school, uh, baseball diamonds and ultimately this park. And, and he said it, it wasn't a gift, it was an investment. And we're going to get a return on that investment. And I thought about that and I thought, well, what, what type of investment is he talking about? And, and then I witnessed it with my own family. It's the families being, enjoying the park. It's the families having a place to get away. It's a reason, one of the reasons that maybe somebody will buy a house in Piasta. And maybe one of the reasons a builder might speculatively build one. All of which brings a return on investment to our tax dollars. So this isn't a gift. This is an investment of federal funds.
How do we invest in our own county properties with the federal funds? Because if we. Ultimately, if we don't use federal funds to offset some of the ongoing costs that the county has for our own properties, we're going to be looking at potentially debt. And, and citizens know what that means too. We're balancing investment in, in communities. And at the end of the day, there's, there's a, a sum total. It's not infinite. It's not impossible to make more. So that's the balance. We heard some really bad news about our HVAC system. Uh, just, was it just a week ago or two weeks ago? That's about a $4 million project. Uh, and IT is coming, I think, next week with more information about some things that we've asked him to further explore. So. You know, that, that's what we have not done is invest in our own selves. And, uh. So that's the other balance that we have to do is. How can we invest in communities, all of them? There are 21 cities in Dubuque County. And they all have, well, most of them have tremendous projects underway. Some of the very small ones, um, have never. Asked us for assistance, Grab, Zingle, those folks have not come forward. Um, Durango, Centralia, I mean, those folks have not asked us to make commitments. Centralia comes over and uses your Kelly Oaks. That's where they go. So, but it's, it is hard to know. And sadly, we are coming to the time where the funds are depleted. And we don't have the ability to make the. Health and human services and public health infrastructure investments that we need to make. Um, your thoughts on that, Jay?
Oh, kind of talking about two different things. So certainly I would agree with you. There's other funding we need to do and we, we do that every week, every month, every year. So that's what the county's been doing for 150 years, maybe a little less than that. Um, we asked for this process. We specifically said, send us your applications. And then we agreed, at least, you know, implicitly by wording, that. Send us your applications until the funds run out. That's implied. Might get some after the funds run out. So my meaning's point is until the funds are at zero, we do have, or the board agrees to close. The applications, which neither have occurred today. So we do have money and the patients are over. I think it's. Important for the board to, to hear and make those decisions. And if yours is no, that's fine, or a different number, that's fine. That's, uh, you know, why we're elected. Uh, but the, the other issues will still be here. They'll be here tomorrow, they'll be in next month, they'll be in next year. Related to our infrastructure, related to road and bridges, related to conservation, related to courthouse functions, Sunny Crest, the jail, we can go on and on. But that's not what we're talking about today. Today we're talking about Piasta and we have federal funds available. And they've gone through the portal, the same method as everyone else has. And I think it's a very worthy and deserving project. And I'd hate to penalize the citizens and taxpayers of the greater Piasta area that would use this park. Um, and deny them, you know, have access to these federal funds that we've freely opened up to 70 other. Community projects. So I would really strongly, I, I, I just feel it's, uh, almost a fairness issue at this point, when you look at. The awards made to Eppworth, Piasta, Cascade, Dyersville area. Um, this, this seems to be right in line with that and I think a very worthy project.
So Annette, I guess I'll ask her to go back because I have a couple more questions that I'm sure you can answer. The question is how much relief federal ARPA money did Piasta receive? And have you spent it all? And what have you, what have you spent it for?
Uh, we received a little over 300,000. Um, we have spent that on generators for our well systems. Um, along with some other public works equipment.
And I don't think we're, I don't think we're penalizing the residents of Piasta. We've given them an opportunity which they have clearly taken to be here before us, but I don't think it's. Right to characterize it that we're penalizing them. I, I think Asbury is bringing in a request for assistance with a sewer program. Um, that's what I saw and you, I put you into that email exchange as well. And I'm sure there are other communities that, you know, they'll be seeing this reported and, and, um. You know, I mean, I, I kind of think we do have to talk about it at all today, Jay. It's not just as easy as saying, here's a gift, go away. We're. Down to the stage where all of the dollars. Matter critically for how we proceed.
I disagree. So, uh, our budget is $79 annually. Uh, if we have $1 million federal funds, that's interesting and good. But it doesn't move the needle. So you, you know, for us to try to, for trying to hold on to our last half a million dollars or million dollars, boy, I, I think that's really wrong. I just, that, that's not going to make the difference in Dubuque County. Uh, we levy about $36 million every year. Uh, we, we need all 36 million of that and we've been very fortunate that our fund balance has been healthy. And been very fortunate that the development, as I mentioned, in both the city of Dubuque and then outside the city of Dubuque, in these small towns has been vibrant. That's what funds county functions. That's what allows us to do the things in conservation. It allows us to do almost $20 million in road and bridge projects through various funds. Some of those are not property taxes. And allows us to have courthouse functions and allows us to even consider. Uh, the next few agenda items, which, I mean, every time we're up here, we're investing in the community. Very rarely is it. Uh, hey, let's knock off, you know. $2 million and eliminate this department. That's, that's not what we do. On, on the good news, because of all the good news, if you want to talk about all of it, we have been able to, under my six turn years. Lower the property tax levy 15%. For those that live in incorporated areas. That, that hadn't been done before from the Board of Supervisors until the last six years. And so we've, we've been able to, one, lower that tax burden. If you actually go to your, your county stating, you'll see it actually as a less. Very small less because of appreciation and assessment. Um, but we're in a very good position. The county's in a very good financial position. So to, to. Hold on to these dollars tightly, just because we have a million left, when we've already made 70 investments, just. Seems off. So I just didn't, not, I'm confused by it.
Well, here's a proposal. What if we, um, table this discussion and we make a final call? Or we institute a front deadline where anyone else who's out there thinking, those of the, the people that are contacting us privately and we say. It's over X because we do kind of have ourselves a situation where. I can't tell someone who, who makes an inquiry, what's the status of the grant? Because we have been taking late applications always and Farley was a late application and they received 2.6 billion. So that's one way to say, you know what? This is it. We're done. It's over. But if we say. You're, you're here early enough to still get significant funding, but the next application, the pool further diminishes.
Well, when we're out of money, then it will be over.
Started taking the applications. We opened up the application process and we took applications up to this date. Okay? That should have been the deadline and it wasn't because some people kept going out and soliciting more and more and more. Which was fine. We had the funds. I said from the start, we should have set some money aside for the county to. Help with issues like the HVAC, but we didn't. I was very much in favor of getting the money out to the small communities, which we did do. We just about, all the towns got something to help their projects. I'm not against this project at all. I agree with Jay. It is an investment. It's going to cut our funds down to about a half a million left. There's not going to be much left, but there's projects that we have approved that may not use all the funding they've been allotted. So we will maybe get some more in. At the backside that we can allot back out.
I mean, I think a great deal of the funding has occurred after the deadline. The Farley application is one of those, as is Cascade and so on and so on. Right, 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 right. They all have. So, um. You know, that was why I'm, we should be telegraphing. That we are closing the application process.
To, uh, go out and solicit more applications, we're going to end up with 70 applications for a half million dollars. I'm not interested in going through. All the applications again. Personally, that's.
It was a way to try to handle this fairly.
Sure, go ahead, Russ.
Uh, Russ Bob, Mayor of Piasta. Um, I appreciate the discussion today. I really, I really do. Um, I believe in this project. Uh, with just about every fiber of my being right now, to be honest. Um, I was out yesterday, uh, knocking on doors and talking to. Uh, the people of Piasta to find out, uh, you know, if they'd contacted you or if they would. I don't know what that did yesterday. It was my first chance to get out and, and actually kind of do something like that. Um, the one story I want to tell you is I, I met with a couple, um, that moved here in March. To, uh, Piasta. They were renting a townhouse. Uh, they recently purchased a, a home and just moved in about a month ago. This, this family's from New Mexico. So this is a, this is a new family to the Dubuque County. Uh, they moved here, uh, with two small boys. They live about maybe three quarters of a mile from, from this park. And very interested that there was going to be a park available that the boys could go and, and play at. Um, the other question they had is, will there be a light put in at the intersection? That's, that's a discussion for another day. Um, so those are the types of things that the city is looking at as far as, you know, what, what will we have to budget? Uh, after this, the investment in this park is investment in families like this, this family from New Mexico. Uh, it, it draws from outside of the, the Dubuque County. We're not just changing numbers. Somebody moves out to Piasta from Dubuque. Somebody moves to Piasta from Eppworth. This is, this is a new family, not from the area. They were not going to buy a home in Piasta. They were looking to move to Anne Yurazbury or to Dubuque. And they came and they went to, uh, some ballgames, uh, at the ballfields and people who had no idea who they were said. Hi, how you doing? Have a good night. And they just fell in love with what the town is. So I think what, what we're doing is we're investing in those types of families who are going to make this their forever home. This is a, this is a family in their mid 30s, uh, you know, that, that moved to Piasta and chose Piasta. Uh, because what they found there. Uh, and to address your, your comment early about, uh, you know, the, the city hasn't, uh, you know, uh. A budgeted 100,000 for this, for this fiscal year. That's, that's part two of the project. The initial investment was back in 2017, 2018. Where the park was cleaned up to be usable, you know, where we invested in, in, uh, in the disc golf course, uh, that exists there now. This is the, the next step. Um, so the 100,000 isn't an end game for us. This is, uh, this is this, this year's amount. So when we found out about this ability to, uh, you know, go for some of these ARPA funds and, and I don't know if it's because of the changing of the guard. I've only been the mayor since. February, February or March, that I'm learning what we're doing. And Annette and I have worked really well as a team. So I think we're learning together and Annette's been with the city for a little over a year and and just sixteen months, sixteen months, ladies and gentlemen. So she comes from, from Illinois. So she's learning the system here in Iowa too. I'm not saying any of that has necessarily affect, but maybe that might be, you know, why we're a little bit late, why we're, we're running behind because we're, we're kind of learning on the run here. And so when we found out about this, we thought this, this was an opportunity to invest in probably the fastest growing community in the county. So and and not just because people are moving there from Dubuque. So I guess those are, that's my rah rah speech, I guess, today and why I really am passionate about this, this project. If we don't get, again, and the, the question, if we don't get these funds, what happens? We kick some of this project down the road. That's what happens. And we possibly lose some people who might invest in the community, move to the community. We might be able to do the parking lot and we might be able to put some restrooms in. Or we might be able to do the parking lot and we might be able to do, you know, some, some playground equipment. But the, the goal here is as soon as possible to get this park to a level where it's utilized by all the citizens of Piasta, Centralia. We've, we also have an eye on, you know, what's going to happen here with, with the community out in Dyersville. Obviously, that affects the whole county. We believe we're right on that Highway twenty corridor. We will be reaping some benefit from that as well. And it would be really nice if we had some people who came and stayed in town and said, hey, yeah, we went over to this little park. It was beautiful and we got to walk on the path and we, and the kids got to play on the playground. So those are, those are where these fund requests come from. And that's, that's why we're here today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Russ.
Your house. What are your thoughts Supervisor Potter?
I'm in support of it. I've been in support of giving money to the getting money out into the communities. I agree with Jay that it is an investment. Yes, my concern, I thought we were lower on the ARP funds than what Stella just said. I thought it was probably in the six hundred thousand range. So I was thinking this is going to just about wipe it out, but be roughly a little less than half. So I would be supportive of it. It definitely is going out into a community that is growing and it definitely is a good investment.
I'm prepared to make a motion, but I don't want to, you know, if there's more discussion or if the board would really like to revisit this. I'm open to those too, but I'm, I'm a reporter and a believer at this point.
We, we clearly have consensus. It's a good project. We clearly want to support it. I think it's a matter of what dollar amount is fair, knowing that there's other requests that are going to come in as well and that we have not addressed any of the, there's many other county projects. We honestly didn't ever go back and look at our, in our, all those requests we had folks make from our own departments, our own experts. And what their needs are, we never went back and looked at those. Just not happened, other than I think IT presented on the broadband, the conduit. So it is, you know, there might be a time to revisit. And I guess I would say this might, this is our last moment to be able to reflect on any of those interior requests.
But once again, we, we set up the process and we did ask both external, internal, and we made the comment of, the board made the comment of, let's hear, let's hear what the public wants. Let's get all the applications in. I mean, that, I was not a big supporter of that process a year and a half ago, but that's what we did as a board and I agreed to it. We will have ample time to hear from internal departments and department heads about funding requests. We're going to hear, we're going to hear about one in a few minutes, aren't we? So that's what we do on a day to day basis and that's what we, we meet weekly for. And so, you know, I can't comment on applications I haven't seen that aren't in front of us in the board. So once they're here in public, then I will review them and comment on them. But until then, they're just speculative.
So I think that it's important to connect that dot there, that the other request, the request that's coming next goes to budget. It's money that we receive from tax, from property taxes and others. We don't have a seventy million dollar budget because we collect seventy million dollars in property taxes. But it shifts to a different account. So these are the federal, one time federal dollars that we're talking about, whether we should be spending any of those funds for any of county projects. Delaying them or putting them into the budget means we go back to the way we've always done it before to say, can we afford it with the property tax dollars that we've collected? Folks don't want us to exceed growth over a certain number. The state's done everything they can to make sure that our budget growth is limited and they're talking about doing it even more aggressively when they go back into January, if you're following any of that news. So it comes from different checking accounts, from different areas of funding. This is the only money that was given to us from the Biden administration one time only. And it is worth noting that when we say we'll get to those, it's through budgeting and it's through property tax resources that those projects will be evaluated with. So it's just, I think that should be noted.
Exactly. Yeah, that's what I'd said previously. So that's, that's what we normally do. So these are unusual dollars. So I, I, I hope, I mean, you know, I hope every administration sends us twenty million every three or four years. That would be wonderful for our community. I'm not banking on that. So, so normal course of business will be, will be the, the play of the day. Once these funds are, are, are out. So I will make a motion to, to approve the ARPA funding requests for the Kelly Oaks project for the city of Piasta for four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars.
I will second that. Have a motion and second to approve the ARP request for the city of Piasta in the amount of four hundred and seventy five thousand. Any further discussion?
I do have a question. Stella, can I ask you in discussion or Ed? Will this funding come from the swap funding or is this one we're going to expect that Piasta will do direct with the feds? Do we know that? I mean, we, how that will, will turn down the funding? I think they should know what the expectation is that they have to report it directly to the federal government.
I think it would be through swap funding at this point.
So we have that money left. Surprised. All right, that was my question.
Think further. Have a motion and a second to approve the funding. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Here he is. Thank you, Russ. Thank you, Annette.
A motion to take a brief recess?
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to recess. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. We are in recess for a few minutes. I'll call the Board of Supervisors back in the session. We'll move on to our ten o'clock work session.
Everybody go.
Be aye and don't.
You guys know how to clear a room. The good news is that I'm not asking for four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars today. I'm asking for approximately thirteen thousand three hundred. In July, we reworked the job description for the Human Resources Director and, and as part of that reworking, facilities and maintenance was returned back to the auditor's office. Shortly after, I sort of took a look at everything that's going on in that department and I took a look at the wages. I had a meeting with John Klutwick, who is on Zoom, I think, in case we have any questions for him. And we determined that I was going to perform a little wage study for our maintenance worker and lead maintenance worker positions. I did that. The documents are in the agenda packet today. At the end of the day, what I am requesting here is a new step schedule for maintenance worker and lead maintenance worker, which is outlined in this MOU that was prepared and approved by the union. They obviously haven't signed it yet because they would be waiting for our signature. And this would amend the union contract to reflect these two wages. In doing the salary study and performing the salary study.
Can you turn your volume up or?
Yes, I can just sit a little closer and be louder if you'd like.
My microphone's not turned green. I don't know if that would help.
Nope, it's on. See? Um. In performing the salary study, there wasn't a single step where we were not the lowest or second to lowest in the seven counties that I looked at. And those counties were comparison wise with population as well as square footage maintained for the buildings. Some of the counties, including, I believe it's Dallas County, actually goes up to step eighteen on their scale, which is a little crazy. We didn't need to go that high. But in performing the, the study, my recommendation would be to adjust both of these wage scales that don't actually have their own defined wage scale in the union contract. And starting both, both of those positions off at step four within the respective scales. And our office prepared a budget impact, which will show the impact to be right around thirteen thousand three hundred forty six dollars and thirty nine cents. I'm happy to answer any questions. The two staff members that this would affect have been with the county for a considerable amount of time. They have great institutional knowledge and like every job, every day that they're here, they learn a little bit more about the buildings. One of them is renewing his electrical contracting or his electrical license. So we will have a licensed electrician on staff. And, and the other staff member has extensive knowledge with framing, plumbing, I mean, everything that you want a, a maintenance person to, to know. And we know that the markets for these positions are in demand. We know that the private sector is paying considerably more. We know that the county offers a wonderful benefits package that is often touted and it is great. But in the name of retention, this is my recommendation. And I know that we would like to have a little bit of a conversation probably. But again, I would remind you at the end of the day that we're talking about thirteen thousand dollars in order to retain a couple of high caliber staff members. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Was the number for the local dollars that they would be paid on a comparable scale here?
I didn't compare with the local dollars directly in this wage scale, in the wage study.
I guess I would like to know that. That would help me.
I was not under the impression that we compare against private industry wages. I'll be happy to bring back a whole lot more of these if that's what we're going to do.
I don't think we're going to lose people to Potawatomi County. So it's about what the local market is, right?
Well, bring people to the school district.
I mean, the school district is paying more. Any private, any private contractor out there is going to pay, starting in the thirty dollar an hour range. And, and I can go do that study. Again, this is a, you know, time value, you know, situation here, where I can get all the studies and numbers you want, but we're not talking about a huge dollar amount in our seventy million dollar budget. We're talking thirteen thousand dollars to make sure that we can retain.
The, I understand that the budget impact isn't great. I get that. But I am getting contacted by people who work other places in the county who also don't make the wage that they feel they should and that the market would bear in our community. So as we individually make increases to individuals, others get further left behind. So these are union contracts and as are those positions as well. At Sunny Crest, we've taken some selected positions and we've made increases. Folks in those other departments are wondering why not them as well? So I mean, it isn't that it, I understand it's a modest request, but it has a ripple and it has a tail to it that we have to at least acknowledge.
I think, I think that's absolutely correct. And, you know, the Board of Supervisors has signed memorandums of understanding with unions outside of negotiations and outside of budget time. And, you know, the Board of Supervisors has signed memorandums of understanding with unions outside of negotiations and outside of budget time. We recognize that situations and times change. And we recognize wholeheartedly that that changing a couple line items in a union contract as far as the pay scale goes is going to certainly affect those other lines on there. And and that's why we have negotiations for those. I would push back a little bit on that we're already paying more than other places in the county. I don't think that's correct at all.
Somebody suggested that?
I I thought I understood that we're having increases that are not in line with the private sector.
No, I asked if you checked. I don't know that. That's why I asked if you had done that. That that was why I asked the question. I don't know that. And that would be helpful for me to know and helpful, I think, for the community to know.
I mean, I I will happily do that. You want to talk about opening up a door, though. I mean, if we're gonna start comparing county jobs to the private sector, private industry and what they're being compensated and then make decisions based on that, you're gonna have a line of people standing outside the chambers and I'm gonna be first in line.
There there is a line outside the chambers. It's coming into my email.
But I don't see them actually. I mean, they're not here to advocate for their staff members. They're not here to advocate for these increases.
To you, the folks that report to you, you bring them forward and you've been making those requests.
Everybody in the county has a department head or elected official that they report to. Any one of those elected officials or department heads could come into this board of supervisors' chambers, get the data together, assemble it, give it, give a reasonable explanation as to what as to what they're asking and and get an approval or denial from the board of supervisors. The fact that I am doing it and nobody else is should not be a disqualifier for me sitting here today asking for this.
More people are gonna wanna report to you.
Yeah. They would brought it to light is we've lost employees to the school district because the school district was paying substantially more than what we were paying here.
Know that. When you know that specifically, apparently?
Just approved permanent part timer because our time employee moved to full time because a full timer left.
Every custodial position that you've approved over the last three weeks, and I believe there have been three, were all because of those staff members moving to the Dubuque Community School District.
Is that specific just to this department maintenance? Do they have a lot of retirement?
It's certainly specific to custodial. I don't know that it's specific to any other reason.
Well, obviously, I mean, I'm not asking this to be disparaging or to be critical. It's questions because that's what I'm hired to do is to ask the questions.
Try to bring their wage scale up to where terrible that we're not losing outside entities because we obviously have trouble filling the positions.
I can say that we looked at, we looked at temps. We actually, I believe we hired a temp to cover one of the custodial positions that are not covered. And that's a five dollar premium on the hourly wage that we would normally pay for that that person. So I believe they start around seventeen dollars and thirty cents an hour. And we're gonna pay twenty three thirty for that person because we cannot get anybody to apply for that position right now. We've received zero applications for that position.
Other folks at Sunny Press who haven't received a wage increase. And they also, we also lose people there all of the time. We just, we approve people constantly to Sunny Press. They're constantly hiring because of wages.
We did move the wages up for the CNAs because of the amount of money we were paying for contract staff.
Correct.
A lot of the other positions were not paying contract staff for at this time, but their contract is up at the end of the year, which obviously we're going where in June, July first would be their new contract. We got the notification. Obviously, there is gonna be some pay adjustments there, but it'll be in the next budget year.
Could those folks be coming in now to ask for wage increases for dietary, for life enrichment?
I'm not here to talk about those folks supervising. I'm here to talk about the two people who report to me.
And honestly, the question, Robo, I will probably wasn't for you, Kevin. It's to my colleagues to say.
You got the notice from the bargaining unit that they wanna start.
Received this.
Negotiations for Sunny Crest.
This must have just been sitting on your desk.
Sunny Crest employees.
Right. They want to open negotiations July first, just like this contract.
Fourth July first contract. We have to start negotiating here.
Correct. I mean, I guess that's what I'm saying. These folks are under a union contract, but we're making, we're discussing wage increases now for the contract. Negotiation is up. So.
For Sunny Crest because of costs associated with getting temporary staff. That's the situation we're into here again because we keep losing maintenance staff. To get a temp in, it's costing us potentially more trying to curb letting, the bloodletting, I guess you should say.
Think we recognize it's happening everywhere, right? It's happening throughout departments. It's happening more than, it's happening throughout our departments.
I understand.
Leaving for a variety of reasons. A being probably a primary driver.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge I my experience in in courthouse and working with our maintenance staff over the six years has been very positive. So, you know, I go into the bathroom, when I kind of look around, when I arrive at my desk, everything seems to be neat and orderly. And usually the heat and cooling works. I feel allowed, but that works. And they've identified us when, hey, you know, you might wanna replace the roof and spend two million dollars to do that. And it's a big number, but you've gotta do it. And you're right. So those are, those are good, both mental decisions and and physical decisions of just keeping the courthouse going. So, yeah, tho- those are, those are going well. I also appreciate the auditor's office taking over the functions of managing the courthouse and the facilities that had then, I think, delegated to us. I showed you how close I was. Didn't even know it really was my number, one of my roles. Because it was done so well by by the group needs to lead. So that's kind of the first thing I want to say. The the other piece that I would say that is confusing, and I don't think we should do it very often as a board, is, you know, these are collective bargaining positions, not selective bargaining. So we did did jump into Sunny Crest, and I made those comments at the time. We did it, I believe, for both the nurses and then the CNAs. And we did make corrections outside of those union contracts. I think there should be exceptions. And I've heard previously, and I made the comment to our previous county engineer, he was also looking for taking two or three people that were in the Teamsters Union and saying, hey, they need to be of increases. I think selectively going in there and modifying these contracts is is just not normal process. And so maybe we're entering to a different phase of union and management contracts. But I I would, I'm hesitant to do that a lot unless it's really needed. The other big piece that I've said multiple times, and I think has to be in our scenario, is our benefit package. And if and if the benefit package is not valued, then we should stop paying five million dollars a year for it. That's what it costs the county, over five million dollars. Budget Director, correct me if I'm a little bit off, probably under, is annually. And if you compare that, you will come out somewhere between four to eight thousand dollars ahead of other governments and the private sector. And so our benefit package is really good. And so if you are working at Dubuque County, you have to value that or else you might, your employment might be misaligned because that's something we have said as a board. And the community supported us that we think that's important, and that gives longevity to to our workforce, which helps improve all of our services from facilities to, you know, functions, the courthouse, to you name sheriff's department. And so those benefits have to, they definitely have to to be there. We have made numerous changes on wages in my six years selectively. Not many in the union, but we have done it, so I'm not against it. I think you spelled out things very well. The auditor has as far as the changes. Are they warranted? Probably. And now it's just back to the board whether we wanna do this and start a trend and pattern. We did it for Sunny Crest. We do it here. We'll probably have our county engineer talking about his two or three people that he thinks are misaligned and we might lose them. But I I guess I don't know if we should do that, but that seems to be the path we're going down, and I'm just maybe cautioning us and asking that question. If we do say yes today, then I don't think we have much justification to say no to other bargaining units that wanna selectively have wage increases that are not aligned. Because wages, inflation and wages have really changed in the last two years. So that that's my comment back to to the board, but I think generally things are laid out pretty well here with the exception of maybe our benefits package.
My understanding was that the movement to the school was probably over a five dollar an hour increase.
About ten grand.
That more than.
You don't have the same benefit.
Four to five thousand benefit for the insurance.
I don't think they have the same benefit package.
Pardon?
They don't have the same benefit package. I don't believe for healthcare. And all these are good points. They are all good points, and we are here without the assistance of an HR director, right? So these would normally not be coming directly to us. They would go to the HR director and the HR director would be in charge of all of all of this because this is, we're not well equipped to do this, in my opinion, because it's about and I don't, this isn't a disservice, Kevin. You advocate for the people that work for you. That's wonderful. It is truly great that people that report to you. That's that's what I would want a good manager and a good elective official to do. But it's, it is very challenging for supervisors to do this piecemeal, and that's what it feels like we're being asked to do.
I can include benefit numbers in future studies. We do fall right around twelfth or thirteenth of the state county wise for our benefits. So they are very, very good in comparison to the rest of the state. I I believe the top ten, eleven, twelve counties usually take up those spots. So my assessment, you know, on the back of the napkin would be that the other counties I compared with also have similar benefits packages. As far as this always going through a human resources director, that that can be true. As an elected official, I can bring these items directly to the board. I can work directly with the unions. I do not need to work directly through a human resources director. You can certainly have a human resources director vet these requests and and look at them. This this MOU was prepared by the union, so this wasn't a, the union was included in this conversation from the very beginning. This was wasn't just sort of a, hey, jump on the Zoom call. We're gonna try to get somebody a little bit extra money. This is a coordinated effort between the union and Dubuque County, the Dubuque County Auditor's Office to get this all above board, make sure that all of our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed.
When is their contract up into this year?
Their contract expires June thirtieth.
So they'll be getting, they'll be getting a note from their union rep too that they wanna negotiate.
We've already received that note.
Could be said that making these wage improvements at a time that all those contracts are gonna come open doesn't benefit the county's position.
Yeah, no, definitely doesn't. It shows a pattern.
I I'd argue that it's a fair pattern based on other counties, and and maybe it does set a precedent for those negotiations and a place to be. You could look at it from either perspective.
Prove fifteen percent increases for other people, so it's not like we've been misers, voted against those. But so, yeah, wage escalation has been high, and that is the largest percentage of our budget. Previous discussions, we were talking about our budget and county and everything we're gonna pay for. The biggest thing we have to pay for is the people that are here. Stella can attest to that, but it's probably in seventy five percent range, seventy percent of our budget. Local funds are people. Big part of it.
Like to reference that fifteen percent pay raise, but we didn't have much choice of that, Jay. The state kind of put that on our table.
I hate the state. You could, we could have all of it. A lower number. I agree. They tied their hands.
They tried to tie us in the back. There's state, there's counties that got forty five percent increases for the sheriff, so I think we did pretty well staying at the fifteen, so.
For another eating.
Further on that, Ian?
For me.
Good.
I assume you were looking for some some action or direction?
That wonderful part of the statement that says discussion and possible action. I do have a MOU and a resolution prepared if the board should decide to move forward.
Our elected official, I mean, should we be, I mean, our department has elected officials that work with the department, so my question would use it. I mean, this is gonna open it up. I mean.
You know, I am an elected official. I I think that's a frustrating part of of being an elected official that's who's not a supervisor is that I I answer to the same people that the three of you do. And if those citizens of Dubuque County think that my advocating for fair and more equitable wages for our staff is a bad thing, then they can choose to not vote for me in twenty twenty four.
Guess my question would be more of, you know, I mean, I've had kind of discussions with the county engineer previously, the previous county engineer and the current county engineer about this exact thing, that they have two or three people in the union, they think their wage scales are wrong, and they wanna advocate for them for higher wages. And my, I've only been doing union stuff for six years, so I'm not, don't have a whole life of it, is that's not our role. That's the union's role.
I I I don't disagree with that. I also think, though, it is our role that when we identify and a discrepancy that we correct it.
Agreed. Yeah, you want things to be.
Of course, I think we would want in a perfect world, the union would be negotiating.
You wanna be fair, but it's contractual. It is contractual, and that's the laws of Iowa, and that's what we follow. We also benefits package is not under collective bargaining, and we've done everything to strengthen that since that law changed.
Yeah, I mean.
By the way, nobody's ever called.
Look at the state of wages. Look at the state of wages when this contract was signed.
Oh, yeah.
And look at the state of wages today. Yeah.
Well, Nate, in the union.
Their contract is up at the end of the year. Here we're gonna start negotiations, so.
I'd remind that the end of the year, it's it's October third, and the end of the year is June thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
You're talking.
End of the year sounds like it's close, but it's not very close.
Oh, I think, you know, or is interested, but we haven't heard from the union. We've been talking about them. Do we wanna hear from the union rep?
John Onyam?
I am here.
John.
Can you, can you hear me?
You bet. Go ahead.
Okay. I just, I did wanna say that here probably the last year or two, we have done a lot of these MOUs before a contract is up, and a lot of that is with the with the more skilled positions that are sought after. And reason for that being, and a lot of, a lot of the companies are doing it for this reason as well. Is so when it, when it does come to wage increase for the majority, you know, it kind of lessens the blow. That's kind of a two-phase increase for them. Because these jobs are sought after. You see people in the private sector now, they are increasing their insurance benefits just to match those, like, say, what Dubuque County's got. I'm not saying that they're that they're all as good because it is very good insurance. But you see a lot of companies now are coming with with wages and better benefits. So this is, these MOUs are not uncommon here lately. I have done probably ten or eleven of them in the last two years, so. That's about all I had to say. If anybody's got questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Hey, John. Jay, do you have anything for?
No, John, I don't have any questions. This is Jay Wickham. I appreciate that comment that, you know, kind of, I was assuming that there was other oh, changes being made in in collective bargaining throughout your unions, and so you verified that. And so it's not an anomaly that we're facing here. It's part of a path. And so it's not an anomaly that we're facing here. It's part of a pattern.
Yes.
Okay, looks like that's all we had for you, John. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Normally during budget time, you know, we're not gonna sweat too long over thirteen thousand. So if we, if we feel or think that this is just jumping it ahead nine months. Not a a big mover related to the budget, very important for the people that receive the increases. I'm kind of middle of the road, you know, I think, you know, part of it is, I I think, I'd like to see most of the agreements stay within the contract. I also wanted all the union contracts to be the same when I first started. And that did not happen and will not happen. I don't know. Harley, you got the most experience doing this and dealing with. Employees and unions.
I was generally against opening up contracts. I'll be upfront with that. But given the times that we're in. Obviously, we did it for a reason up in Sunny Crest, financial reasons. This kind of comes right back down to the financial because if we don't have the workers, we're gonna be hiring more. Just got done talking. We got a temp in now that's costing us five dollars an hour more than what a part timer would cost us. If we lose any more full timers, we're gonna have a lot of issues. We're not competing with, well, the school district. We have to be able to compete with them. I know we have a good insurance. Policy benefits. But the outside agencies are getting better insurance coverage now to to draw more people in. I would be in support of Kevin's request, just to, we have some very talented and very good guys working here. I wanna keep them guys here. I don't want to move.
Sadly, I'm not in favor of it. Because I think it's the same thing that we've heard from Rhodes and we've heard it from Sunny Crest. It is an ongoing problem in the fact that they're not here also. Isn't reflective on me and isn't reflective on Kevin and isn't reflective on this board. But I don't, you know, regardless of what Ann wants, I don't think it serves the county's interest. To do wage increases this way at this time.
Hey, Blood, do you wanna get some more information on it, Kevin?
I will not be bringing this back in front of the board.
Have the. Ten ten work session to discuss the remainder of the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two Board of Supervisors meeting schedule.
This should take about thirty seconds. I'm proposing that we make the October twenty-fourth meeting our evening meeting and that we cancel the October thirty-first meeting. That's part one of the conversation. Part two would then be taking the December nineteenth meeting. And making that our evening meeting and eliminating the December twenty-seventh meeting, which we typically, since I've been here and I think the year prior. Not had a meeting between Christmas and New Year's due to staff heading out of town and. That falls on a Tuesday after the Christmas holiday. Those would be the two things that we would be proposing to solidify the schedule for the rest of the year.
You're saying no meeting on the thirty-first, do a night meeting on the twenty-fourth?
That would be when our Tom Hancock recipients would come by. And then the final meeting of the year would fall on December nineteenth. You could actually make that a day meeting or an evening meeting. That would be up to your discretion.
That could be a day meeting. That's fine.
Simply eliminating the meeting on the twenty-seventh.
There'd be no meeting on the twenty-sixth, right?
Twenty-sixth, we're closed. So the meeting would fall on the. And I'm suggesting no meeting on the twenty-seventh, correct?
Jay, your thoughts?
I'm fine either way. I have grown children. Halloween is not a thing for me, but I understand. There's a lot of, it's a, it's a family night for a lot of people. I don't think anything's critical either way. So if my colleagues feel supportive of changing the meetings, I'm I'm open to that. We're fine or pace the flow. What we have to do is moderate.
Just clerical in nature. So looking ahead, if those are two difficulties, potentially, that's just, I'm good with what Kevin's proposing.
We will make the changes then in Civic and. I'll send out an email reminder a week or two before each meeting so that we understand what the correct dates are. We can notify the Tom Hancock Award recipients that the evening of the twenty-fourth will be their time to shine.
It'll be a night meeting.
Thank you.
Just for my colleagues' information, the seventeenth, I will be zooming in. I will be out of town that Monday. You're here just on Zoom.
God willing, I'll be here.
So October seventeen? Did you want me to chair or did you wanna chair?
Yeah, you must chair because you'll be here. I'll be. Just zooming in. Be easier than just have you run it. There anything else? Bit of the organization.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Now the motion is second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Stand adjourned.